Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order for a special meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll and establish a quorum?
You have Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Shinir will be absent this evening. I do expect Councilmember Warren and Hanson momentarily, and Mayor Steinberg.
Well, thank you very much. We do have a quorum, and let us begin. I want to begin with the consent calendar and ask, I know Councilmember Guerra had a request on the consent calendar, is that correct?
I think we need to do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
Well, that's always the way to start, and I thank you for the reminder. Yes, I've only been doing this job two years now, so. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do have two announcements.
Yes.
On item three at the dais, there is a red line. There's a dollar amount has changed from 450,000 square feet to 1 million square feet. I also have Councilmember Harris recusing on item number nine.
Okay.
And I have four speakers.
So noted on the consent calendar?
Correct.
We had Councilmember Guerra, Vice Mayor Guerra first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and move the consent calendar, and I know we have a number of folks here to speak on an important issue, on the issue of childcare, and I'm excited about a lot of the work that's been done on this issue. I do want to thank our public transportation department and our parking enforcement folks who have took in an issue of how we look at parking issues, loading and unloading in our city, and I'll reserve my comments till after public comment, but I do want to thank even some parents that came in here, and even I see one of our local constituents over there, Gigi, here today to support the item two. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to move the consent calendar, and particularly on item eight. Thank you.
Very good. It's been moved. Is there a second on the consent calendar? Second by Miss Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Ashby.
I'm happy to second it, Eric, but I would like to ask for one friendly amendment, if possible. This is from our planning staff, and I guess the clerk has a document, you have a red line document. It's a, this is on the digital display for shopping, retail shopping centers. It's a change from 450,000 square feet to...
Did you already read that into the record?
Oh, did you? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, she did.
I just got a note that said, make sure I say...
Our city clerk beat you to the punch there.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, sorry.
Okay, no worries. Okay, so that's, it's been moved and seconded. Now we'll go to Councilmember Guerra on an item on the consent calendar.
Oh, I think we're going to go to public comment?
We're going to go to public comment first. Let's hear public comment.
We have four speakers. The first three on item number eight, Rochelle Smith, then Rosanna Herbert, then Tamika La Cluse. Is Rochelle here?
So, good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and Vice Mayor Guerra and council members. My name is Rochelle Schmidt, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak in support of the city ordinance. I've brought with me today my daughter, Gigi, who...
Hi, Gigi. Hi, sweetie.
A little bit shy, it's the middle of naptime. But so she attends daycare here downtown Sacramento, and currently loading zones are limited to five minutes, and while Gigi is learning to write her name at school, she has yet to understand the limits of time. I think all parents can attest that daycare drop-offs and pickups go different every day depending on the child's mood, and some days are simply easier than others, and no parent wants daycare drop-offs to go longer than needed. We all have the same goal in mind, which is to get to work on time. Equally important is the ability to leave your car parked. The reality for parents is that we all have to leave our cars in the loading zone, whether we're dropping off or picking up. It's unrealistic to expect parents not to leave their vehicles. Both my daughters began daycare as infants, and even now as a toddler, there's no way that my daughter can check herself in and out of daycare on her own. This ordinance is very important to parents like me who just want to get to work on time, and I'm hoping my phone didn't break, and not worry about getting a ticket because we had to drop off our kids. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much for coming and bringing, really, seemingly small but vital issue to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gigi.
Next speaker is Rosanna Herbert, then Tamika La Cluse, and then McWorthy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Rosanna Herbert, here for the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition, and we just want to say thank you. This is so great that the ordinance is being amended to allow for additional time for parents and working families to drop their kids off. To me, this is really a good example of how we're continuing to grow as a very important city, but we're not forgetting that there are very much folks all along the way that are impacted, and parents with kids are going to benefit from the new soccer stadium, but they're going to benefit from this revision to the loading ordinance, too. So, thank you, Vice Mayor Eric Guerra and the rest of the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosanna.
Tamika La Cluse, and then McWorthy.
Hello, Mayor and council. Thank you so much for having us here today. Thank you, Eric, for this ordinance. This is huge. Transitions, drop-off and pickup, if you don't have a small child, those transitions are huge. You don't know if it's going to take three minutes or 10 minutes. When you have a car seat, if there's other challenges in your day, just having one less barrier for parents is super important, so thank you. And I hope that this is just one step forward to many more policies that we can expect from you, council, and from city departments to make sure that we are using a family-focused lens in policy, so thank you very much.
Don't be afraid to bring them forward, right? The things that may seem small, but where we can make a change, we'll do it.
Well, and it's a step, right? Every small step can, has the potential to make great leaps and bounds, so thank you so much. I look forward to more things coming from you guys and supporting some more good policies to help parents and families, and especially our children, so thanks.
Thank you very much, Tamika.
McWorthy is our final speaker on the consent calendar on item 10.
Good afternoon, panel. Look like we can't get away from the real fact of water. Let's sit down and have a conversation about water, but you refuse to because what I told you when you came in here, you was grants and bonds, and that's all we seen, grants and bonds. We ain't seen nothing say how many jobs, how much they gonna go to the gym funds, your grants and bonds. Tell the people the truth. If you want transparency, tell them the truth and teach them how to figure out their money and where it go and how many jobs you're gonna get out of the money. But that would be too good. That would be too good. And, Mayor, I don't know where you're going. It's sad, man, because I'm definitely, every time I get a chance, I try to get somebody in Donald Trump's ear, "Cut the fund. Cut the funds, and they will starve to death." That's what you gotta do, to make people wake up. Furthermore, you don't have the people with the education in this town. This town was built by the government. Everybody went to school to pass the civil service test. Everybody's in school to pass the civil service test. There were nobody in school to have a business. That's the reason we behind. We will always be behind this town, because we are nonprofit, the same as the city. Understand a 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(4). The biggest theft there is is in a 501(c)(4), which is the, it's an umbrella of 501(c)(3). It does not file a tax return and file a statement. People, just public information, sit down and read that. You will see some of everything in there that they put in there, and nobody say a word.
All right, that is the public testimony on the consent calendar. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Guerra, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all of the folks who came out here on this new ordinance. It was inspired by Gigi, and if the city attorney would allow us, I wish we could tombstone it as Gigi's Law, because, you know, the issue, I mean, so plain and simple, it was like, why can't I get mom to help me get to school, right? And in this situation, I know it myself personally in the mornings, you know? All of us, when we're dropping off our kids in the morning, it can be stressful, and yes, we try to get in and out, and it doesn't take, sometimes it doesn't take five minutes, takes just a little bit more. But the fact that with this ordinance, particularly in the downtown area, a parent can come to a loading zone, have up to 15 minutes to go in and check their child into a childcare center, and also when picking up, makes the day a lot better. If you start your day off at work and you're already stressed from that transition, I mean, the entire day of productivity can be affected. I do want to thank our council member Hanson from, because this, a lot of this happens in his district, and I think it's where many of the challenges happen. But it wasn't, one thing that was brought up was, this wasn't just an issue with childcare facilities, but also we have a lot of senior facilities in the city as well, and in many of those cases, when you need to go and help your parent or your family member out, you can't expect them to come out on their own. And so this ordinance, as I'll call, as I'll, I'll name it, nickname it Gigi's Law, allows people to have the compassion, it's a family-friendly ordinance to help folks in our area, and parking's always, is an issue of debate, but it's one that takes a little extra step of thinking about what are the family's needs as we're doing our daily, day-to-day work with that. But I do want to thank again our city staff for taking a look at this issue. I know our parking enforcement officers just want clear direction, and they're compassionate. They even said they understand that when it's the first day of school, it's always the craziest time, so they take a little more flexibility, and I want to thank them for that. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate everyone's support on this ordinance.
Very good. We have Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to briefly thank Mr. Guerra for working on this, Matt Ironman and his team. As my colleague Eric mentioned, we do get significant complaints, and the most intense can be a parent who got ticketed unexpectedly, is the word I'd use, and so I really appreciate the flexibility and leadership that the parking staff have always shown in responding to these fine tunings. It does take us to make an action, and Eric and the people who spoke, I really appreciate you taking it beyond what we normally do is just work with the parking department to resolve the citation and fix the policy. I appreciate that very much.
Excellent. Councilmember Ashby.
Yep, good work, Eric. This is great, and good job on the coalition that has been working with each of us on a variety of issues. This is good progress. It's hard enough to be a mom and dad and drop a kid off. Downtown is really tough. I too have used downtown childcare, and, you know, you're just going to get a ticket because you're not going to be able to move that kid any faster than they're willing to go on any given morning, and so, good work. Thank you very much.
I'll just add my congratulations, Eric, and say thank you. Great work. It, you know, some of the most important work you do, you know, that we do as a city, isn't the complicated ordinance, long-term plan, I mean, that's all very, very important, but it can be the basic fixes that allow people's lives to be a little bit easier, and this is cool. Remember this one. Thank you.
Well, don't thank me. I think you can thank Gigi, and you can thank the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition.
You can show Gigi the videotape of this hearing soon, when she's a little older, maybe. Okay. Thank you all. All in favor then of the consent calendar, recognize the amendment of the million square feet to million square feet on item three, and Jeff Harris abstaining on item nine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. That passes eight to nothing, with the single abstention noted. All right, let us move on to the main item for our afternoon special session, and that is the 2018 Ethnicity and Gender Diversity Report, and I want to ask Amy Barnes, our diversity and equity manager, who knows, been working very hard on this, to come forward, and we welcome you and look forward to your presentation.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here, and good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ami Zenzale Barnes, and I serve as the diversity and equity manager for the city of Sacramento. I'm excited to present and engage with you the report for this year. I'm here along with Daniel Sanchez and Lani Milstein from the city manager's office. I'd like to also give a special thanks to the Department of Finance, Department of Human Resources, which helped provide data and assisted in the analysis, and the Office of the City Auditor, who also provided their expertise and contribution. I also would like to thank community members of the Latino Stakeholders Group, African-American Employee Leadership Council, and the Sacramento Women's and Girls Coalition. Had some really powerful conversations, and I look forward to continuing that work with our community members. As we get started, I really want to lay the foundation. The report is intended to be an annual work product to provide city staff, elected officials, and community members a snapshot of the city's workforce efforts to diversify the organization. The report is intended to inform a diverse management strategy as a baseline to foundational and change management, work and planning the drives, diversity and workplace inclusion, opportunities for all of Sacramento. And this is different than the past. When diversity was confined to equality of opportunity for individual employees, diversity now is vital to the city of Sacramento. It is vital to increase competitiveness, improve service delivery, succession planning, economic and technological innovation for generations to come, and we will see, as we move into this report, that this systematic approach is generational, ongoing, and it will be and intended to be transformative. All right, so let's get into it. How the report is shaped. It is important to understand that the 2018 report is shaped and grounded in an approach for future viability for advancing diversity and equity. So here are several considerations I'd like you to keep in mind. Workforce equity is defined. In order to create shared responsibility, you must have a shared definition that is transparent and clear. Workforce data. The report focuses on full-time positions in order for us to prioritize and establish a baseline. It redefines management employees that are more representative of the job functions, which include hiring and supervising, authority, and to coordinate and provide oversight of programming, performance management, coaching, the like. From the last year's report, I thought it was important to also note that the HR department confirmed that the missing EOC report that has been rectified and provided to the federal government actually shortly after the last year's report was issued, and that this next report is due later on this year. So we're in full compliance there, and that was, I think, very, very important. The role of ECAP's Data and Census Bureau. It's important to know that the city's ECAP system allows an employee to be listed as Hispanic or white, but not both, and that is our information system. The U.S. Census Bureau allows a person to self-designate as white and Hispanic. When this report compares a percent of the city's population that is white, the number can be considered inflated because it can include Hispanics, and that is why we use white, non-Hispanic, and that's an important point to keep in terms of moving forward. The report also begins to investigate, and I say begins, to investigate workforce pay equity, and we'll talk about that a little later. Also, 2018 workforce hiring data. This report will help provide indicators and establish baseline for strategic planning, assessment, and future measurement. To round it out, there was recommendations that are included in this report, and lastly, it highlights current and future strategies for the workforce equity, which I think is the essence of the direction moving forward, is that we want to look to our past to influence how we move forward, and so there are current action strategies and strategies that we intend on engaging in 1920 that will help us reach our workforce equity goal. Workforce equity defined. As mentioned, to create shared responsibility and transparency with our community, it is extremely important to have a goal stated. This is the way that we can collaboratively address structural, racial, and gender equity. We also can help us clearly lay out a pathway to serve as one of the largest employers for communities of color for Sacramento. It could also help to communicate that our workforce and our community, the challenges, complexities, and resources needed to move us forward. Our goal is to ensure workforce equity goal that reflects the diversity of our community throughout functions and hierarchy, eliminate institutional and structural barriers. The results of our endeavors on our current workforce, it's important that we want to be focusing on diversity hiring, but we also have to take into account our current workforce as well, and so we want them to have a higher level of productivity, effective service delivery. We want diverse experiences of our staff to help leverage problem-solving and adapt to the changes of our growing and diverse community, foster innovation, and creates, and also have an inclusive work culture. So let us glance a little bit at, quickly, the city of Sacramento workforce data at a glance. Do you all like my flower imagery? Thank you. So, one of the things, I think workforce data, in order to give a snapshot, I think this was important, because when we think about diversity, we also want to consider race and ethnicity and gender, but we also want to think about age and the complexity and the, all the different intersectional identities that our workforce entails. So there's two particularly ones that I want to highlight here, and I'll use this mouse here. One is looking at generations. We have a full-time workforce of 3,777, and when you see right here, we have and could have in departments, we could have three generations of workforce, which is really powerful in leveraging skills and talent, and it also presents complexity in terms of capacity building, training, and development. Another statistic that I'd like to highlight, or at least a number that I want, is here, retirement eligibility on the far right. 26% of our full-time workforce is eligible to retire. When you think about workforce planning, that means a great deal of knowledge and skills leaving, and so succession planning and diversity inclusion in that is really, really important. Sure.
Management employees and employees of color, it says, and female employees, it says 113.
Mm-hmm. That's approximately 36% of the total management employees.
So it's 113% of what, though?
Oh, it's just 100, sorry if that's confusing. It's, the number is 113, which equals 36% of the management.
Oh, okay. All right, I got it. Thank you.
Also, another thing to highlight, too, is here, employees of color, 42%, female employees roughly 29.8%. Here, a big one, when you look at the data, four departments, police department, fire, public works, and DOU comprise approximately 71% of our workforce.
Just have one third question.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Ami. I think this is wonderful, but the thing that constantly happens, and I don't know if it's an issue with data, but I didn't get to ask you about it in advance, is just the picture on LGBT employees is always missing, and so I feel like, you know, being the first openly LGBT person elected to this council, that I'm, I don't exist on things like this, and our LGBT employees don't feel like they exist, and so I really, I raise it every time. It's never fully addressed, and I think it's probably a data issue partially, but I think it's really critical that we not forget our LGBT employees.
Absolutely.
Because they look into this world and they don't see themselves, and they feel written out, and I don't blame you or anyone else, but we can't just keep doing that.
Absolutely.
How do we remedy it?
Can you turn your mic on?
Well, I think there's a couple of thoughts regarding that, and thank you for raising that, because you do see that as part of the recommendations regarding our data collection. It is a data collection systemic that we need to improve upon in terms of our infrastructure, and I completely agree with you. I'm a queer gay woman myself, and so there's a part of my identity...
I know, that's why I'm not blaming you for this.
...that I don't see reflected here as well, right? And so, and I think that's actually was going to be one of my comments to kind of round out the report, is that we, as the city of Sacramento, we are going to begin to outgrow the constraints of this report, because there is so much diversity of the city of Sacramento that is not reflected here, but we know is part of our workforce. And so I think that that is a major priority, as well as to document, and how we go about the instrumentation, systematizing, collecting data on the LGBTQ community that is inclusive, that promotes safety, and that is accurate, is something that we're going to have to engage in some conversations, especially when we look at it systematically.
I agree, and I'll just finish this comment, Mayor, but this is, I think, the third year of this. Ever since day one, I've asked, I even made a friendly amendment to the original motion starting this, that LGBT employees be included, so whether it's the auditor, the city manager, the city attorney's office, that direction has been lost, and we continue to be left out in ways that I think, whether you're a trans employee, whether you're somebody who just isn't sure whether you can come out in your workplace, you feel like the city doesn't recognize you in reports like this, and I regret that, because there's so many people struggling to figure out how to be and how to be open, and they want a supportive workplace, and we just welcome, we can't go on like this.
Absolutely.
And so I totally believe that you get it, and we need to work through it, but Shelley, we got to do it, and it's always been this data collection thing. It's come back three years now. I think by now we should have fixed it, and it's not too late, and we've made some strides, but I want to exist on your chart.
Yes.
I'm sure you do, too.
Yeah, and you will, and we, I think that's something that we need to address immediately, and that is part of our recommendations moving forward.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for interjecting and raising that very important point. Continue.
All right. Wanted to go on next to identify the department efforts. I wanted to include this information. I asked departments throughout the city to provide any systemic or standalone diversity-inclusion activities that were related to outreach, recruitment, hiring, and onboarding. And so while there is not one consistent approach, which is what we're going to strive to move towards, many of our departments did a variety of these activities, or in combination of, and so I thought it was very important to highlight this, because there is a perception that there is no efforts going on among our departments, and many of our departments are doing their best within their means and the resources and capacity and knowledge and training to do efforts that diversify not only the candidate pool, but also to support current employees, women, and people of color. So that just gives you a flavor of some of the efforts that is currently underway. New hires. So now it's building off the reports for '16 and '17, and I really do want to thank you all as council. The briefings prior to this were very helpful in shaping this next bit of data, and I do want to acknowledge for transparency and full closure that while we built off the audits of '16 and '17, this is not in the report, and therefore the auditor did not have a chance to review this, so we look forward to the auditor reviewing this, but we did want to share this, because we do see this as some kind of indication and a baseline of how we can potentially be moving forward and developing our goals. So it's important to remember that our focus has been on full-time and the adjusted management classification. Comparing ports would be like apples and oranges, and so full-time data, our data from full-time employees for '16, '17, and '18 was drawn out outside of part-time to compare racial, ethnic, gender makeup of new hires for 2018. We wanted to see some kind or any indication of change or where we were at in terms of this being the third report. So here you have, you have the five major at the bottom, just going to walk you through it. Blue is 16, orange 17, gray is 18, the gold bar is the 2018 new hires for the calendar year. So you can see here indicated by the red arrow that new hires are less white than the existing employees. New hires for the Hispanic and Latino population are more Hispanic in terms of 22% versus the existing employees of 18%. Here you see that Asian has slightly rose as well in terms of new hires. African-American has stayed relatively flat or the same as the previous two years and slightly less than 16. And then here you see a very interesting number, which I think we're going to have to contend with in terms of some critical reflection and conversation, is the 10% of two or more races. Huge jump. Was reminded that, you know, here in '16 and '17, or at least in '16, having a two or more... Was reminded that, you know, here in 16 and 17, or at least in 16, having a two or more races was not necessarily an option you could choose. So, you see that as newer employees come in, there's an embracing of two or more races. So, what does that mean for us regarding our workforce equity goals? How do we begin to shape that? And we can see, given the, the trends of the population in Sacramento, we can see this being embraced more and more by our city workforce, and this does not necessarily tell us which two or more ethnicities or race, but there's an embracing of those intersectional identities of two or more. So, that's a huge jump than 16 and 17. Also, want to highlight here, in our, in the bar as well, you'll also see that comparing new hires to, again, existing employees in 2018 is more women. Thirty percent is designated by the F, 30% male, the 70 here, 30% compared to the existing employees is 27, male 70, down from 73. For the Asian community, 48, from 37, 52, 63. For the African-American community, again, slightly, this is a little bit lower, female to female, 39 to 40 against existing employees, and a little, an increase as in the male employee hiring. And then, two or more, you have 53 females, 47 males. Alright, and then, this graph particularly highlights employees hired in 2018 compared to existing 34.8% to the existing city employees, which is 29.7. So, we're seeing an indication of more women being hired. Yes. What do I say about this chart? It gives you a overview of full-time employee new hires by department. So, again, you see the 46, the 22, along the bottom here is the grand total, and then you see the departments on the left, you see the percentages. But it's also important, we wanted to include, when we see percentages, we tend to think big numbers. It's very important that you look at the number and the percentages, because it gives you perspectives and it gives you context. And again, there is more of this in the, in the full report as well. Current workforce stats. This is the US Census, city of Sacramento, this is our baseline for our workforce equity goal. Here, we have all full-time employees by department on the left, grand total on the bottom. Full FTE or full-time count is 3,000, full-time count, exactly. So, and this is as of November 18. Moving on, this is the same chart, but wanted you to see a scale in terms of over-representation, under-representation. And so, what here you have is 40% here at the bottom of the scale, and then the 28, this is overrepresented in its largest number, and this is underrepresented. So, here's the 40, in this particular department, we have 39 in this particular, and this represents the pop, the census population for this, this race ethnicity is 33.1, and if you take that number and you add that, that's, well, how should I put this? For example, mayor council is 6% over-representative as compared to the city population. City manager is 19% overrepresented of the city population in terms of white. So, it goes into this in terms of the scale of over-representation. The greatest number underrepresented is here in this particular department, in the Hispanic-Latino community, where the city's population is 28, we have an under-representation of 28% All to shape our workforce equity goals. Here is the management employees, similar chart as well, by department. Here, the numbers circled in red are the four largest ethnic communities that are representative in the workforce. Here, again, we have the over-representation and the 67% here, under-representation, 20, negative 28% here, and these areas as well where it is dark red. So, I want to say in terms of, we have a greater disparity of people of color in our management classification than we do in the full-time, it's greater disparity there. All of these numbers will be influencing our strategy forward, and we'll talk a little bit about that.
Question, clarity question. Just as you are able to measure the change, the positive change for the city in terms of new hires, where the numbers are better than the existing employee demographic, can you also measure the same thing when it comes to promotions of existing city staff, but being promoted to higher-level positions, and that trend?
I, I do, that's something that we want to know and has come up, but I don't think that we're in a capacity to do that now through our NIOG, but I'll, I'll shift it over to Laney.
I, we, we think we can, I'm looking at Daniel, who knows the data, and across the room at the auditor staff, and, but it's going to be some real work to get at that to, because the data doesn't come out in a user-friendly way, but it's certainly something we can look at doing.
It's not as important as the omission of the LGBT.
Yep.
Community, but it is important, because the, the pathways to management are as important as the new hires, as important as the overall numbers at any given time.
Mayor, can I just follow up on that?
Yeah.
Because this is good. Some of these departments are huge, and some of them are small.
Mm-hmm.
I think, you know, you've got this great color banding system, but maybe rather than use the percentages, which can be thrown off in a small department by one person.
Exactly.
You actually just show the raw number of employees that fall into that, so that we can see, oh, well, the city clerk's office has 15 people, and they break down this way.
Mm-hmm.
And then, we have the color bands know whether it's over or under.
Okay.
Just so it helps put in perspective what a small department is versus police or, you know, fire.
Absolutely.
Yeah, utilities.
And that's why, in that previous chart, we tried to include counts, because it does give you a perspective, because 67 in the city clerk is, is not the same context if it was 67 over-representation in the police department, or in fire, so absolutely. And the report, the full report, which I know all of you are going to read in great depth, is, it breaks it down, count, percentages, and goes into a lot of great detail that helps give context. But this, again, this presentation was just to kind of help give a, an overview, but definitely take the suggestion. Moving toward.
Go ahead, no, no, go, go.
Moving towards looking at full-time employees by gender in each department here. What we can see here is a reflection of traditionally male-dominated fields that we will have to think critically about. For example, the fields of public safety, women are underrepresented, if you see in fire, 9.3, police, 32.9, STEM fields as well, public works, and utility. So, that's really no surprise there, but we're going to have to get very creative about how we, as a city, built in structures and a systematic approach to doing that, as we look at shifting those numbers. And it's important to note that, you know, women are, in the city workforce are slightly, are just under 30%, but represent the city at 51. So, that's a huge disparity that we have to, to look at with great urgency, as to how we, we move in the next year regarding that. So, and I, I do want to say, I think it's important about the new hires, but at the same time, this report really does highlight the necessary work that has to continue and must continue. It was a great positive boost, and it's in the right direction, but there's a lot of work that still has to be done. Moving towards management employees by gender and ethnicity, this gives you a picture of women are approximately 38.2% of management employees of the 38, too, 23% are white, 3.8 are Hispanic Latino, 3.8 are African-American Black, and 4.8 Asian. So, you see a lot of room for improvement there, but also trying to understand, and I, I think, Mayor, your comment regarding about promotions and coaching and mentoring of our city workforce is extremely important. Performance management is extremely important, and that is one of the reasons why performance management is a major goal of our Equity and Inclusion Leadership Pilot Series, is to equip our managers to identify talent, support talent, and moving through the city pipeline, so that it creates even more opportunity for, for all people. Modeling the workforce change. One of the things that came up, and again, this was also not in the report, and will work to share with the auditor, but we wanted to give a perspective. What we heard from feedback, from council briefings, is that we wanted to kind of get a range of, like, how long would it take? What is this, you know, what does this mean in terms of time? So, this is a, to illustrate, and I think Daniel did a great job with this, in terms of trying to model what this workforce change would look like in terms of time. But I think it's really important to zero in on the assumptions that are on the left. City staff remain at the current full-time equivalent that is in now, the 3,777. The city attrition is approximately 10% annually. The other major assumption is that the demographic profile of the city residents remains the same, okay? So, when you look at the next chart, you will see the census on the left, and then you will see the Model 1, Model 2, and Model 3. The red lines are to give you a visual reminder of where the census is, given that that is our workforce equity. So, in Model number one here, higher staff in the same demographic proportion as 2018. Note, the 2018 hires would be 50% white, 21% Hispanic, 1% Hawaiian Pacific Islander, 9% Black, 8% Asian, and 7% two or more. So, you can see where the lines are, is still where the gaps would be, would still be where we're overrepresented and where we're underrepresented. And this is after, and this would take approximately after 10 years. Model 2, higher exactly, exactly as the reflection of the city residents as stated in the census. So, you see here, still over-representation, under-representation, and this is after 10 years. Then, you look at Model 3, which is after 11, is if we aggressively hired new staff that have been disproportionately underrepresented among city staff at a higher rate than reflected in the census. And you still see, based on this model, how the numbers would fare out. So, we're looking at takeaway from here, could be, I think we were discussing it, 11 to 30 years, it's generational. But that does not mean, and I don't mean to depress people, but I think it is, it gives a perspective of the nature and the longevity and the sustained element that we have to move with this work. And it cannot deter us from the sense of urgency that we need to do in order to shift some of these systems, develop our plan, wrap up our GARE cohort, which we'll talk about, but we still need to move with a sense of urgency. But it does give perspective about how long it takes and how we have to have sustained effort if we really want to bring diversity and equity into the city of Sacramento.
Is there any legal reason, thinking about Prop 209, is there any legal reason why we cannot make as our city policy, Model Number 3?
That's an excellent question. I would have to, I would have to look at that further, I would probably consult with our city attorney to see.
I mean, why wouldn't we endeavor to make up for?
Right.
Past, for the past, unless we were somehow legally prohibited from doing so, and you're always going to pick, quote, the best candidate, too, right, for a job, right? Somebody, the minimum threshold, the candidate has to be qualified and ready to, to do the job, but given all those, that, that correct assumption, which always has to be, why wouldn't we be aggressive around recruitment and hiring with Model 3, absent some legal prohibition?
That's something we can look into.
I'd put that out there for people to think about and chew on, but obviously, we need guidance from our, from our attorney as well. Okay, thank you. We done?
We have a few more slides, I only have five more.
Okay. I was.
I'll move them very quickly.
I think we'd ended on a.
This is such important stuff.
High note of aspiration.
No, we'll leave on a high note.
Okay.
Wanted to, as I mentioned before, the approach regarding, we're just beginning the workforce pay equity and what the data says. There is, the data reflects that women earn on average 11,501 less than a year than men. There's three major considerations with this. Here, four of our departments that are traditionally male-dominated in the STEM and in the public safety field, there's an over-representation of men. These, the second consideration is these jobs are higher paying in salary. The third consideration is these four departments make up 71% of the workforce. And I say that, that there could be a question of representation, more so any kind of systematic discrimination or bias. However, the recommendation in the report does, and I would, I would, and what is being recommended in the report, is that we do a deeper dive regarding pay equity, that we have to enhance our data collection systems in order to, to look at characteristics that include job performance, tenure, educational attainment, and as you can see in the note, that approximately, in terms of our data, we have approximately 36% of all city employees' data does not include educational attainment. And I think to really look at this, from an approach of adjusted to unadjusted, and look at that, is very, very important. The other thing is that, over the last year, 19 cases, instances of salary discrepancies were investigated by the city of Sacramento. These cases do not account for potential differences in education or performance as stated, but in these 19 instances, the city examined each classification on a case-by-case and determined the reason for these differences in pay and rectified it. So, there was some good work done with that, but in terms of moving forward, and this is something that I would greatly appreciate feedback on, and I think, as we move forward, is how do we define workforce pay equity for the city, and how do we approach it? Because we could look at it from a class, class pay, and then that's it, or we could do a deeper dive and look at educational attainment, job performance, classification, and tenure, and other characteristics, but we've got to improve our data systems. And that goes back to the point regarding, how do we account for, record, and accurately include the LGBTQ plus community and other communities that we have not identified yet?
Okay.
Very quickly, talk about the recommendations, management classification. We need to be a little bit more precise with that. There's not clear definitions, but we need to be more precise so that we can capture the higher-level authority, the role and function of management. The management, the managers of the city are key to our workplace inclusion. I can't underestimate that enough. Their capacity, their training, their hiring, their decision-making, in addition to the executive team and the directors and high level, but the middle managers is something that we really need to focus on in terms of our capacity building, in terms of moving towards transformative diversity and equity. Our city recruitment and hiring manual, this has been in conjunction with the leadership of human resources, a city-wide recruitment and hiring manual, a fundamental document that will not only be a resource, but it will be a training mechanism for those middle managers. It will set the stage of the expectations of what is expected when you do early education engagement about the opportunities here to outreach, and all along the workforce continuum until separation. And so, this is a huge undertaking that I'm part of the work group that was led and is led by human resources, and this is extremely important for our work here with workforce equity. The last one is defining and determining workforce pay equity, as I mentioned. It's a very complex matter, and I think we need to do a little bit more investigation, and would love to have something more solid in terms of what our approach is going to be for the 2019 report. Moving on to action strategies for 1819, a lot of work is already underway. As you may know and are aware, citywide training to reduce bias in employment practices was implemented last May and June. The second one is, the diversity and equity manager was hired in July of 2018. Performance management, reduce bias, advance inclusion, again, this was this strategic training to start. Again, this was, this strategic training to start talking and creating a culture of performance management, coaching, opportunity, and mentorship. We did that with the executive team in October of 2018, in, in direct collaboration with HR. And then, a really great, low-hanging fruit that we were able to do in the early part of this year was, we were able to revamp and include diversity and inclusion as a scope of work in our RFP for executive recruitments. So in those executive recruitments, firms who put in a bid would have to not only show and share their statement to diversity inclusion, they'd have to demonstrate their organizational composition, in terms of their ethnic makeup of the composition, to show that commitment, as well as, in terms of including it into the scope of work and identifying, and being accountable, in identifying a candidate pool that reflects the city of Sacramento. So that is a really great thing that, to address in terms of the disparity regarding management. Lastly, action strategies for 1920, have to improve our data metrics systems and collection, which goes back to the point of the LGBT community in our workforce, which goes back to pay equity. We need to strengthen our data collections, and we need to leverage the systems that we have now.
Promotion trends.
And promotion trends, attrition trends. Why are people leaving? Exit interviews, all that kind of thing. Equity and Inclusion Leadership Series Pilot, Awake to Woke to Work. It's a model from the equityinthescenter.org, and that is in direct collaboration, again, systemically building into the structure of the city, a variety of formats, training series for our current workforce. And that is in direct collaboration with our organizational development of HR. Targeted Recruitment Pilot, again, that is something that would love to initiate in this 1920 year, in terms of, once we have the city manual, we actually engage in a recruitment pilot that documents where people may be falling out in the recruitment process, and taking a deep dive to that so that we can do strategic interventions. Government Alliance on Race and Equity, that is a training capacity building that we are working with, that works with state and federal, I'm sorry, federal, state, and local municipalities to build a race equity tool into the system and the decision-making of our city structure. And I have some members of the GARE cohort here. Would you like to stand really quick, please, so they could see you? These are our 12-member team, and they represent the hierarchy and functions throughout the city, and it is wonderful to work with all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
And then, lastly, it is extremely important that we have a five-year city race and gender equity action plan. It's even been commented that it probably needs to be 10. I'm more comfortable with 5. But we need a type of plan that will build off the workforce equity goals that will be created out of our GARE cohort and will be included, so that we can have and broaden our scope, our footprint, and our strategic systematic changes that are transparent for the community to weigh in on and help us do that. The strategic plan is key. Do not like to work without a strategic plan, and I blew through that really quickly. I have so much. However, the Workforce Data Metrics Collection, Equity and Inclusion Leadership Pilot, the Targeted Recruitment Pilot, and the GARE and the Workforce Equity Goals are all going to be part of our five-year strategic plan, so this is an illustration of that. And this is the model and framework with which I work for the office, and it frames the work that we do. So right now, you can see, when we're talking about data metrics and collection, it fits right into that model of bridging, making sure that we communicate, we assess, and we measure. Our pilot series is about building capacity and DNI training. Targeted Recruitment Pilot is about improving our recruitment measures and our process. The Government Alliance on Race and Equity, Workforce Equity Goals directly goes into the foundation, our vision, strategy, and leadership moving forward. And now we're done.
That was a great presentation.
Well, thank you.
Glad, glad that you are, chose to come to the city of Sacramento, build this position. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got some, a lot of exciting work to do. And lastly, I would just say, I think we'll be back very soon to the council through coordination. There's going to be resources, possible resolution, your idea of how do we create some goals and a resolution to take on maybe that more aggressive model? And we really want to come back and, and seek the council's support, because signaling from the leadership, from you all, would be extremely important in helping us advance our diversity and equity goals. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from the public first, is that, we've got five or six speakers, and then we'll turn it over to the members.
I have seven speakers signed up to speak on this item. The first is Rosanna Herbert, then Teresa Rivera, Ayesha Jenkins.
Good afternoon again. I'm here today as a representative of the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition. My name is Rosanna Herbert, and I'm the co-chair of the Boards and Commission Team. The coalition asked me to come today to make brief comments on the diversity report that was released last week. We have not yet had a chance to fully dive into it and review the report. As you can see, it was very complicated, but we plan to do that shortly, and the coalition will provide you with written feedback on the report. In the meantime, we wanted to just make these initial comments. First, it appears that this research is evolving into a very valuable tool for management to more actively pursue representation and pay equity for women, people of color, and LGBTQ folks. And that is fabulous. You guys are doing a great job. To this end, we did want to acknowledge the positive contributions of Diversity Manager, Ami Barnes. And we also want to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city manager for waiting for the best possible person to take this role, and I think we've seen she is the one to do it. In the report, we are happy to see a couple of things. The additional analysis that was done in the intersection between race and gender, a separate analysis of your part-time employees, and a review of your management classifications to determine more accurately who really serves as a manager. We do have one concern in my 10 seconds. If you turn to page 85 and 86 in the report, the auditor makes two mentions of things that we would like for you to look more closely at.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
We will.
And we'll put it in writing.
We've got the auditor's letter.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much, Rosanna. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Teresa Rivera and Ayesha Jenkins.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Rivera, and I'm here in behalf of the Legal Women Voters Sacramento. And we have, and we'd like to state that we're in support of the development and recommendations provided in this report. Secondly, we support the resources needed to implement the workforce equity and goals. And the third is, we support the five-year plan of action identified for the 2018, 2020. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ayesha Jenkins, then McWorthy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, council members. A huge thank you from the African-American Employee Leadership Council is owed to the city manager for assuming the transfer of ownership, I'm sorry, the office of the city manager, for assuming that transfer of ownership, and to the former Mayor Johnson, Mayor Steinberg, and council members for directing the work of the Diversity and Equity Manager, who, in her nine months of being here with the city for a robust job, well-done with the new Diversity and Equity Report update. We also would like to thank you for the continued collaboration with you directly, and with the city manager's office, and the mayor and council members, as well as the Latino stakeholder group. The additional layer of data that has been peeled back is what was necessary to obtain a true depiction of what diversity looks like in the city of Sacramento's workforce, and in comparison to that of the Sacramento community. For AAEOC, this new depiction of what makes up the diversity in the Sacramento's workforce draws attention to departments such as the Finance Department, Human Resources, and the Office of the City Clerk that shows 0% representation of African-American employees in management. There are still concerns of other data, such as attrition and promotions, not extracted for tracking purposes for measurable opportunities. Not tracking this data is still a concern as we, as AAEOC, since there have been numerous African-American employees in management positions to depart from the city since the original diversity audit in 2016. AAEOC reaffirms the need to take these recommendations seriously. To measure success is going to require sustainable approaches from every department. Foundation, foundational and systemic accountability is key to success for every department. Let's face it, training is only as effective as one allows for it to become. To diversify the city Sacramento's workforce, as it mirrors the community in which it serves, is going to require from top down, the breaking of structural and institutional barriers to current processes and historical practices, and is going to be painful, but an investment worthy of our future generations. This is, for example.
Your comments, your two minutes is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is McWorthy, then Clarissa LaGuardia, then Carolina Flores.
People, I hate to come in on garbage that have gone by. We saw this 63 school district numbers chart. Let's go to how many people work for each department. Then you use your percentage with that base. That's common math. When you go through all these charts, you don't know who there. When you stand here and tell me you can be white and Hispanic, somebody lying here. You can be LGBT and still white or Hispanic, you are dupper dipping. You've got to separate those numbers. Somebody got to go home. Are you LGBT and then you over here? Wake up. You don't even know who you are yourself. Young black men, please call me, and we can tell you. Diversity is the elimination of, the word surrogation, that's all. Many nationalists have shake the sack, the one fall out first, get the job. Who that leave us? Black folks nowhere. That's what. What is African-American? What is it African-American? Who is here African-American? Can show me the blood African-American. I am a Negro. When you Google South Carolina, where is this plantation? My great-granddad is as white as you all are. I got nothing Africa. Wake up, black folks. Go into business with yourself and let this city know you cannot hire anybody that don't live in this city. This is where you're losing. You must live. Once upon a time, you had to live in this city to be employed. You could live, come from anywhere in America and go to work here. A thousand strong, come over here and with your boy. Where were all the other black women here? Where were the BTLPT? I got nieces, one of the prettiest girls I ever walked in Santa Barbara. Wish she got out of the military, keep your head level. Go when you want to and become qualified, never stay in one place too long.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Clarissa LaGuardia, then Carolina Flores, and then Jade Nicole.
Hello, Strategic Relations Officer for the Sac State Latino Alumni Chapter, and as president of Voto Latino Sacramento, I just want to say that I look forward to supporting the Diversity and Equity Manager in increasing diversity in your workforce and creating pipelines for opportunities for Sac State students. I want to be able to see more immigrants, more Latinas represented, actually, in management in the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next, next speaker, Carolina Flores, and then Jade Nicole.
It's a pleasure to have worked with you, and it's a pleasure, Aragüero, for all the support that you give to the Latino stakeholders. And Alejandro has done a wonderful job in supplying us all the reports that we needed, and being very patient with me about when I needed another report and when I needed something else. So our work couldn't have been done without Alejandro present. And I think that one of the things that we asked for was that, two years ago, we asked for a manual, and two years ago, we pushed for a diversity manager, and I'm glad that we've made some progress. That 3% Hispanic new hires, it's positive, it's a positive step, it's progressive, but I'm sorry, 3% is just ain't enough. I like your comment, Mayor, about couldn't we just hire the people to fill the gaps so we could be even in equity? I think we can do that. And when we asked for it, all through the two years that we worked together, we were told that that was illegal, that it couldn't be done, that you couldn't hire one for the other. I want to make a comment about the LGBTQ population. What happened in Sacramento State University in the School of Social Work is that when people retired out and all the Latino faculty, they were replaced by LGBTQ. Hence, there's no Latino faculty in the School of Social Work at Sacramento State University. You have to be very careful that you do not replace one ethnic group, one special group, with another. Please do not replace us.
No, that is not the point here. We want to add to the richness of the diversity across the border. We will never, in this city, hit one group of, of people against one another. Not going to happen.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. I'm just explaining to you something that happened at Sac State at the School of Social Work. It was just one example that kind of horrified all of us. We didn't say anything, because we didn't want to be thrown against each other. It was like, we were happy that they hired him, and we want to be sure that we get a copy of the people that are retiring. We want to list the people that are retiring so that we know which management positions are going to be opening up. I'm glad that someone else brought up the thing about the promotion.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
Mayor, just, Ms. Flores, before you go, I, I think that one of the things that's lost, and I appreciate you saying that, is we have LGBT people who are in the city, who are people of color. They're Latinos, they're African-American, and they're missing, as if we didn't count Latinos. We don't count LGBT people, and everybody deserves a chance to have who they are reflected in the city work. So I appreciate your comments, and I totally and wholeheartedly agree with the mayor. We're not looking to replace anybody, we're looking to recognize them.
I understand, but.
No, that's okay. Thank, thank you. Thank you. That's good. We'll continue. No, we'll continue. It's okay. We'll continue the dialogue. It's good. Thank you.
Our final speaker on this item is Jade Nicole.
My name is Jade Nicole. I'm from MagnaMopus, Talent Magazines, and Help Fight Poverty. We need to address the inequalities in our community, and how they are impacting women business owners and business owners of color. Women and business owners of color are not given the same opportunities as white men who come from privilege.
Nicole, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this topic is about the city workforce. So if you're talking about broader diversity in the community and the business community, your comments today are not germane to the topic.
Yeah, but the city workforce, and if this system affects all areas in our community, not just at the city level. The culture in Sacramento very much comes from City Hall. That's why I'm bringing up this issue.
Okay. I'll let you continue.
Women and business owners of color are not given the same opportunities as white men who come from privilege. We have a huge problem in our arts community, where women artists, artists with disabilities, and talent with color are being excluded from paid, from paid opportunities. A lot of our artists in our arts community have been working for Sacramento years without having an income, and that's a pay inequality that needs to be addressed. Our artists are playing a huge role in making the city more livable and more marketable to cities around the country. We need to make sure that artists are being included when it comes to getting pay, and that, that we're recognized for our contributions to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers on this item.
All right, let's turn it back to the city council. This, this is not an action item, correct?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it is, to receive the, and to take, pass the recommendations. Okay. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and pass the report. And, and then, you know, just a couple of preliminary comments. First of all, how lucky are we to have Ami? She's amazing, and I agree, echo every sentiment that, while I fought for two years, like, what is taking so long? It's worth it. It was worth the wait. You are worth the wait. You're perfectly suited for the city of Sacramento. Your experience, and your education, your knowledge, your employment background is perfect for us. And then, I, I just personally love the fact that you yourself feel the weight of so many of these graphs, and bars, and charts, and lack thereof. And to me, that makes a lot of difference, and I can see it reflected in the trust from some of the partners in the community that came up and spoke today, staff and non-staff. I think they, the level of trust with you in the seat has gone up. And as council, there's nothing more we could ask for than to have a hire like you that would come in. would come in and help us increase the trust with our own employees and with our community because people feel heard where they didn't feel heard before and they feel represented where they didn't feel represented before. So let me start with that baseline. Thank you very much. This report, I think, I'm going to couch my comment, is a really great first report. And I met with you, so I'm going to say something I don't think you would say out loud. I'm dissatisfied with it in some ways and I know you are too. And that's just part of it is because of things like what Councilmember Hanson said. It misses points that we all really want to talk about. The biracial piece is so huge in Sacramento, especially the more you, the younger generations, the farther you go down, the more biracial they are and multiracial. And gosh darn it, we want to get all of that, right? And people could mark five of these boxes and we need to, we need to honor that. And I would just say that I really appreciate Councilmember Hanson's comments and it's hard to be the only. It's really hard to be the only and he's the only. And for him to say, you know, we want to recognize the LGBTQ community is really important and not just recognize, but when you're not recognized, you also don't feel valued. And so that's so important that we get this on here and we find a way. I know Jorge has tried really hard in some of his other audits, like when we looked at the committees and commissions, to try and address it. And it is challenging for our HR, it's a big legal challenge for HR, but it's one we're just going to have to tackle because it's just not okay to proceed without having that piece of the puzzle put in here. I want to talk about the report itself, although I think it warrants more time than I've had looking at it. I've looked at your early drafts and now, so my comments are based on really just a couple of readings, but I think it's worth a deep dive in the future and maybe even a conversation coming forward. The biggest thing I take issue with is this, and I know it's unintentional on your part. In fact, I heard at least two speakers mention how it helps us today, but I think it could hurt us too, is when you separate out the full-time from the part-time employees, in some ways, the women get a disservice. Because when you look at all of the employees, the women are at a twenty thousand a year delta. So the gap is almost cut in half when you take out the part-time employees. So while I think it's really good to look at part-time versus full-time, part-time is an appendix item in your report. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that combined, it's still almost double the delta on gap that it is when you just look at full-time employees. So I think it's important that we somehow, we can still separate them out, but we got to look at it together and separate and the part-time piece needs to be more than just an appendix, though I know that's important to you too. So that's the first one. I wouldn't want anyone to look at a report from last year or an audit from last year and say there was a twenty thousand dollar pay gap and now it's only eleven thousand. It's not, it remains the same. What happened is part-time employees were taken out and when you look only at full-time, it's an eleven thousand delta, okay? So I think that's a really important distinction. I don't want anybody to think that we've made up fifty, I wish we made up fifty percent, but we haven't quite gotten there yet. When we look at the representation piece, the shaded chart that you showed that showed over-representation in some categories like white male or under-representation in some categories like black female, I know it would only be two boxes, but I think from a visual standpoint, it's so important to talk about the fact that thirty percent of our employee base is female and fifty-one percent of our city is female. It's the biggest gap of all on any of the charts. And then, as you know, and why I love you so much and having you here, is that that's a threshold question, gender. That's just a threshold question. When you break it down under intersectionality of race and sexuality, it just gets worse and worse and worse for those ladies as they add on to the boxes that they check. And so, and the higher we climb in the city, so managements are the lowest numbers, the higher the pay scale, the more the inequity. And that gets to the mayor's point about being able to look at promotion status. We really need to be able to separate that out. And one thing I liked that the auditor used to do is he had sort of these categories of legacy versus new hire. I know you got at some of that, but there are charts that you could look at like, okay, historically, here's where we were, but on these new hires, starting like 2016 on, here's where we are. And it is a much better picture for the city of Sacramento and more the trajectory that we want to be on and I think representative of where we need to go. When you look at the auditor's response to your report, and this is something I really want to, a plea I want to make to my colleagues. We audit HR, we audit utilities, we audit fire, we audit IT, we audit every department. This is a diversity report and it's a baseline for Ami and for all of us and moving forward. It's not an audit and I don't want to lose the audit. I want to continue to have audits because Jorge has a different skill set than Ami and I think it's really important that the work that he has started on those audits, that that body of work continue for us in both ethnic diversity audits and gender diversity audits. He doesn't do what you do, so you're the one making the recommendations and it's a rich list that I can't wait to see unfold, just like I couldn't wait to see you hired. But the check back on that should include the auditor's office as a second layer. We should continue to have the report from you, but we should also continue to have an audit because his letter includes so many important points that an auditor would look at, but I wouldn't expect the person who's heading up the office to look at. You know, this line that eighty-one percent of the classifications and forty-six percent of the employees were not scrutinized is a question that needs to be answered in an audit, not necessarily by you. And then, you know, the idea of under-representation of women, which we've already talked about, is also, I don't think necessarily quantified in here in the same way that it would be in an audit, the whole fifty-one percent versus thirty percent and lowering as you get into those management ranks. So I think this is a terrific baseline report. My favorite part of it are the recommendations, how we move forward and do better, the bias trainings, the next steps, which I know, having spent enough time with you, is the part you're excited to get to too. So I can't wait to do that with you. I can't wait to build on the relationships. I'm super proud of the people involved, but especially like the African American Employees Group has been through the wringer on this thing for the last, predating this mayor and, you know, going back and Councilmember Jennings has tried, worked really hard to get these guys in these audits and I'm super proud of you guys and to hear you come forward today and feel like this is progress makes me happy. That's probably the highlight because it's hard not to feel exasperated by this issue and to see your eleven-year projection is really hard for me to take. You know, it's hard not to feel overwhelmed by this problem. It's hard not to feel the weight of being the only woman on the council. It's been way too long that I've been the only woman on this council since Bonnie Pennell sat in that seat, so five years. Representation matters for all of us, but fifty-one percent of this city is female and one ninth of your council is female and has been for five years. We, that's not in any of the, it's not in the audit, it's not in your report, it's not anywhere, but I promise you, it makes a really big difference and that's not a dig on anybody up here. But we just need to be honest about this conversation and have as much help as we can. So thank goodness you're here. I'm very, very glad. And hopefully, Jorge, thank you for your feedback on this and your initial work to kind of get us to this point and your continued work. I look forward to your continued work and the next audit that shows us the progress. Thank you very much. And that's a motion.
Okay, I accidentally didn't punch up Councilmember Getta earlier, so I'm going to take him next, if that's okay, and then Councilmember Warren after that, so.
Are you good with that, Councilmember Warren, or?
Apologies. Apologies.
I don't know. Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Well, first, I guess that motion needs a second and, but I'll second it with some direction here so that the motion includes, one, the direction from Councilmember Hanson about including the LGBTQ statistics and also identifying promotion and capacity. Promotion and attrition is something that we've been talking about for a long time about, how do we ensure that as we're moving up in the management levels, we're not just recruiting from outside of the city, but that we're growing our own? And I think that that's a piece that needs to be part of the motion as direction for to come back to council. And then the third point, which has been always a struggle with me when it comes to 209, is figuring out what is that, what is that legal question on 209? So I'd like to ensure that we can come back with a clear understanding, where is our, where is that line of constitutionality when it comes to 209? So if, I'd like to second it with those three components. And first, yeah, appreciate it. Thank you very much. And, you know, number one, I want to thank Ami about this, about your, you know, being here. You know, we got the right one is what I have to say about that. And I know that there was frustration from members of the council about, you know, why we hadn't recruited a person quickly. And I know with my conversations with our city employees and some of the folks who were on the selection committee giving advice to the city manager from the community, that they wanted to make sure that we had got the person with those skills to get us here. And it took us a few rounds and I'm glad we did. I'm glad we waited and we did, and we got, we got the right one because it's given us something much more robust. One, I have to thank both our employees and our community for getting us here because as much as our auditor, and I thank him for that first report, and it was, I think, a big eye-opener and awakening for a lot of folks. Some of us, we had already seen these, but I don't think action happened without actually our employees and community coming together. And I've enjoyed actually seeing the, both the Latino Stakeholder Group and our African Americans Employment Leadership Council working together on this because that's, I think we need to do more of that if we're going to confront our issues and our challenges. And so I encourage more of that participation. And I think that's a big takeaway here, that it's been that collaborative effort. It hasn't been a top-down approach that the auditor posed a, an outcome to the city council and the city council then went top-down, that it has been becoming more organic. But I don't think we could have done that without the right person at that, at that point. And we have Ami to thank for that. You know, while, while some of these reports and we've discussed whether the original, you know, the hot and green scale metrics are a way that we want to represent this, I think it was the first, our city auditor's approach at identifying where are the extreme under-representation points? And I think it served it at that point. I know, I think in figure nine of the staff report, we did discuss, let's look at the sheer numbers so that when you do have a department like the Treasures Office, that's a small unit, one shift in an employee, both on the gender and diversity can immediately skew that, that color from, you know, fuchsia to maybe a light pink, you know? So I think it's important that we evolve in our, on how we're presenting the data and that information. The numbers are still there. I mean, you know, we still have got a lot of work to do. But what I found much more exciting about this report, and I want to thank our Laney and our HR staff for helping out on a lot of this, is breaking down the number, the success in the new hires. And while it's not a success and a positive for every demographic, it started showing some positive trends on gender and on diversity. And that new hire piece, I think, the more we track that, are we moving in the right direction, is going to help us in achieving the kind of scenario and model we want to do. And in fact, what I liked about the community involvement and the staff involvement is when that first report came out, it didn't have the gender breakdown on the diversity piece. But it was through the community and staff involvement that said, hey, we need to, when we do this report, Ami, can you do that? Can you break it down? And so I want to thank you for making sure that as we report these, we are bringing those points up. I remember Caroline Cabias bringing up the point at the first audit, that if we looked at just diversity, we would miss the point of women of color and sure enough, when, as the reports came out and the information came out, that was an even more challenging point to identify. And now we're doing that. Now we're, we're finding out where our points are. So I think there's a lot of positive here and while the baseline is still something that's awakening, the message today is progress is happening. And progress is the part that we should use as our energy to continue to move forward. But again, I'm going to go back to, it's only happened because we've done an intentional and active participation with our employees and our community stakeholders who feel that they want their city to represent them. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I know, you know, we've still got, like in our Police and Fire Department, we're making progress, but we still got a long way to go there on our, on our departments that are more on the STEM field. We still got a long ways to go there and, but I feel very positive that the numbers show we're going to get there if we just continue to stay the course, but more importantly, be aggressive about how we do that. And with that, glad to second the motion with the particular directions on those pieces. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Remember Getta? Councilmember Warren?
I wanted to, I have a couple of questions, but also I want to just thank staff for the hard work in compiling this information and I do think the, you know, where we are today really suggests that there's still a lot of work to be done and we should really try to, you know, try to progress as expeditiously as possible. But I also think that things, you know, in terms of our hiring practices, I think are very important for the city. And I also know that when we hire, you know, oftentimes, and I've heard it said that, you know, we want the best hire, we want to bring in, but a lot of times, that's subjective. You know, people submit their resumes and somebody might have a bad interview or there just may be some connection between an interviewer or the person making the decision and the person they're interviewing. And so, you know, I mean, it's not necessarily we're getting the best people just because somebody hires or interviews, you know, maybe a little bit better than the other person. And I say all that to say that we have criteria, we may look, we may need to look at some of that, but the hiring practice is still subjective, you know? I don't know that we, that we have an absolute system for saying or suggesting we're getting the right person just because a person makes a decision about who they wants to hire. That's a little more complicated, but it's a thought. And I just, in terms of us being able to get there quickly or more efficiently, the mayor and vice mayor had questions about 209 and we have to absolutely be respectful of 209. But still, the hiring practice and how we come to those ultimately decisions are, they're human decisions, you know? We're not robots, we don't just make these decisions in a vacuum. So I say that, also, I think it's very important that we, we understand how people that are currently employed are being treated. So, you know, retention, I think, is very important, you know, attrition. I also think it's important that we track complaints. If we have particular segments of our workforce that are either having to file complaints for one reason or another, or having disciplinary actions taken against them. And if the numbers are skewed in a particular area, we need to understand why that's the case. You know, because discrimination can take place in a lot of ways and I think it's important for us to just understand if there are these irregularities, we need to try to understand why and to try to fix them. Because when we do have a reflective workforce, we want to try to maintain it as best we can. You know, I don't think, I don't think we want to discriminate against anybody, but that suggests that everybody's being treated fairly. And if we have clear evidence that that is not the case, then we need to do something about it. And so I just, I want to thank you for your, you know, your report. Also want to thank all the people that participated in helping us get to where we are today. And it's not easy because sometimes people are reluctant to come forward, you know, and say what they really believe or to even check the right box. As my colleague, Mr. Hanson, said, you may not want to check a certain box because you don't know how you're going to be treated or received and that's important. And we want to make sure that there's a level playing field for all people in the city. And so hopefully, this will help get us there. I do think, you know, ten or eleven years, that's a long ways out, you know? I'd like to see us shorten that, you know, that arc and try to help us get to a more reflective city as quickly as possible. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. Ami, thank you for all of your hard work. I just echo the comments of the people who spoke before me. I want to thank Councilmember- of the people who spoke before me. I want to thank Councilmembers Ashby and Guerra for adding the friendly amendment around the LGBT community because that's truly important, and everybody said it. The last thing I'd say is I think to Mr. Warren's point about that arc of 11 years, I think with retirements, particularly as Boomers move out of the city system, we may be unprepared to fill those jobs as fast as we're going to need to. And that's a big opportunity to shorten that arc, but also so that we're ready with our recruitment and retention, and to really recruit the kind of talent we know we have, and, and to reshape that in a much shorter period of time. I, I believe that we have that chance. And clearly, this is an organization that people want to work for. Our employees stay for a long time. But I, I do think retirement is a great opportunity to diversify. So, thank you. I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of great comments have been made. I also want to thank you, Ami. I appreciated your briefing. It was very thorough, really an illustrative report. And also a thank you to Jorge and your crew for pulling together a lot of the information. You know, I'd just like to say that I believe that we can get to a more diverse workforce. And as Councilmember Hanson just mentioned, the retirements coming up do afford an opportunity. The problem is you have to have people qualified for the positions. And so, so we really have to pave that path if we're going to get where we need to go. You know, in that vein, both the police chief and the fire chief have come up with plans to prepare youth in Sacramento to do well in the academy so that they could be hired and be successful in the police and fire department, which are our two biggest hiring departments. So to me, those two programs are, are a big key to diversifying not only the police and fire, but our entire city workforce. It's just a matter of numbers. So I just wanted to laud the two chiefs for having an eye for that and working to, to pave the path for our young people to enter the workforce in a prepared situation so that women and people of color, LGBT folks can be successful in the academies. I really think that's a very important component. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. I won't repeat a lot of the things that have already been said, but I do want to thank our employees, who I think have done a great job of standing the test of time, where we've seen the injustices, whether it be in hiring, whether it be in retention, whether it be in promotion, whether it be, whatever the case may be. And I thank them for allowing their voices to be heard and to be able to stand up to what we have seen in this report, where we know that we are still working to make things right. And so I just want to personally thank all of our employees that stood up and are still standing up and are now even working together in order to affect change in our city. And I think it makes our city stronger. So I do thank you very much for that. I have a sense of urgency, and I'm not willing to wait 11 years to get there. And I think I heard that consistent with our entire council. I heard about a five-year plan of action, a strategic plan of action. But I don't think it's going to take us 11 years to get to pay equity. I don't think it's going to take us 11 years to get to a consistent hiring approach among all of our departments. I don't think it's going to take us 11 years to put on a specific intentional strategic plan of action that gets us every year where we can see the progress that we need to make. So I hear the five-year plan of action, and I agree with that. I think we should be looking out at five years. But I also want to make sure that I'm hearing that every year, this council will come back and take a look at the progress that we've made and the strategies that we've put in place, and that this will not get lost as another action that we've taken on that gets lost among all the other actions that we've taken. We have gone through this far too long, and too many people have suffered for too long. And I think it is time for change, and the time is now. We know we have the right person in charge. We know we have the right employees who are working with us. We have the right council that is committed to making the change that needs to be made in the city of Sacramento. We have the right city manager. So I would like to make sure that we have the right course of action, that we sit down on a consistent basis and take a look at that. And I'm sure that's going to come back at a later time. But I didn't hear it today, and if I did, I missed it. I want to make sure I hear every year that we're sitting down, inspecting what we expect, inspecting what we expect. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Great discussion. I, I made my comments throughout the proceedings. I won't repeat them, agree with everything that... Yes?
I just wanted to comment on Rick's point. I agree with you 100%. That's why I, part of the motion, and I think Eric touched on it too, is making sure that we have the auditor bring us back, the audit too, so we can track it. I think it's really important. Thanks, Mayor. Sorry.
Yeah. I guess the only thing I would repeat from my earlier comments was the emphasis on your three options here in terms of how aggressive we want to be to make up for what has not occurred in this city traditionally that we're trying to, that we're trying to change, and to come forward with some suggested direction. And again, vet with our lawyers on the so-called 209 question, but I would be, I'd be hard pressed sitting here to, well, I would support option three unless there's some compelling reason, unless there's some compelling reason why that's not possible, feasible, reasonable, or legal. So, for further discussion, leave it there. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Very good. Thank you. Great discussion. Okay, that's the agenda. We do have public comment for items not on the agenda, by the way, which we will not have tonight. I, I mixed it up. This is the regular meeting. Tonight is the special meeting. So there won't be public testimony on items not on the agenda tonight, but there is this afternoon. And we have how many? Oh, and then I have my 1, 2, 3, 4 report.
Chair, do we want to do council comments first?
Let's do, I thought we're doing public testimony on items not on the agenda. Let's, let's do that. Then we'll do council comments, and I'll give my lengthy, lengthy 1, 2, 3, 4 report.
I have six speakers signed up to speak on matters not on the agenda. The first is Sally Shapiro, Nick Brandt, then Mac Worthy.
Thank you all for coming. How many do we have here? Ms. Shapiro, please start singing.
I'm Sally Shapiro, sculptor from the Kennedy Gallery. I hope I don't have to sing this every year for the next 10 years. Genocide lives in the USA, hurting the homeless as you play. They, they beg you for help and you look the other way, wallowing in gloat for one, one more day. The laws against loitering are unconstitutional, so is making your neighbor's lawn into a urinal. You wish we were robots, but we're actually animals with bodily needs, but you're acting like cannibals. The system is rigged, the sewers are open, from the boroughs of Boston to the hills of Oakland. You've got your eyes so tightly shut, don't want to see the ugly that you have brought. My neighbor died hueveces a las tardes, against the fence with a smile on his face. After sleeping six months in the alley, his smile still revealed a heavenly valley. You're all suckling off the deed of corruption, and you don't know which way to look. Should you ride on the billy goat of destruction, or write a very unordinary book? The system is rigged, the sewers are open, from the boroughs of Boston to the hills of Oakland. You've got your hearts so tightly shut, can't feel the love you haven't got. Genocide lives in the USA, hurting the homeless as you play. We beg you for help and you look the other way.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
For one more day.
Song is complete. Thank you. Your two minutes are up.
Our next speaker is Nick Brandt, Mac Worthy, then Robert Copeland.
Hello. Hello. My name is Nick Brandt. I just wanted to talk about because I would like to help these homeless, to get them off the streets, and I would love to help feed the homeless. And it would something we can do for our community. And, you know, when I'm on light rail, they end up crossing tracks, and then light rail drivers have to honk their horn. And I wish that we can help them out, and maybe we can create jobs for them. I would like to help them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mac Worthy, then Robert Copeland, then Jade Nicole.
Mayor, when you had a blowout down here, a young black man got restraining order. Now, you only could find one young black man, and all the hell was raised here, get a restraining order. Mayor, that's reason Martin King is dead. Mayor, that's reason Martin King is dead because he went behind closed doors and cahooted with preachers that blew his head off. Be aware. Now, when I raised what was going on in Chicago, Hanson said, well, they just elected a lesbian. I didn't mention anything about it. I know more than you'll ever know. When the preacher told you a young black man came in this town, you made it your business to talk to. That's preying on young black men, homosexual world. I'm going to watch you and be well aware, and let the FBI agents know that I'm watching. I'll take pictures. People, we black folks.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Is it your point?
I, I just would like to remind Mr. Worthy that while you are entitled to make homophobic comments, they are not welcomed by this body. As we strive to be inclusive and to not discriminate, I can't stop you from saying those things, but we, we don't welcome those comments.
Yeah, well, I, I didn't come here for you to welcome nothing. I come for you to, our freedom of information. When the, the only woman on the board says, I'm the only woman here, what, how do you identify homosexuality? You got a male and you got a female. How do you commit? Ask them the question. It's not a way. Where's the preacher? Go to the Bible and talk about it. But you refuse to because facts are going to come out. That's not how the lesbian world, the homosexual world is going to make it. Go back to Mohaus in Atlanta. Bring the black homosexuals. Go to Washington DC. Who was shot? Homosexual young black kid. The judge cut him loose. Wake up, people. More than here. I have a relative with a clerk, a Supreme Court, Otis Thompson. He couldn't even hold a job because he left. The FBI agents couldn't even use him because they were blow. The boy in Chicago has another leg, which is an old man. Going to serve, the FBI agent get in. Watch the movie.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland, then Jade Nicole, and then Jeffrey Tardagia is our final speaker.
Vice Mayor, in between speakers, I'd like to just point out that while this is a comment session for items not on the agenda, they still need to be items within the purview of the city of Sacramento. I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments that we're not going to sit here and listen to homophobic comments that have nothing to do with running this city and, quite frankly, are insulting.
Point will take it. Mr. Copeland.
Okay. I wish the mayor was sitting right where you're at, Eric Guerra, because I want to talk to him especially. He wants this to be a world-class destination city. How many people are not benefiting in this destination, world-class city? Because the homeless population is growing. The rent is one of the fastest increase in, by percent rate, in, in the entire nation. And I don't see the city council addressing those problems to my satisfaction. I mean, I hear that three of our city council members got a plan for that rent or something, or a probably mediation type deal. I'm going to say it ain't going to work. Because we've tried before and conquered. It didn't work. So if you have a plan like that in Sacramento, I'm going to be against it. What we need is real rent control, real, just cause eviction. And you know where I was yesterday? I was talking about that at the state Capitol. I mean, I mean, they do more than this city council will ever do. And as far as Angela Gashby, being the only lady city council member, how many actually run, other ladies that run for city council while she was here? Very few that I know of. So if you want more ladies on the city council, they have to run for the position. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jade Nicole, and then Jeffrey Tardagia.
My name is Jade. I'm with Talent Magazine's MagnaMopus and Help Fight Poverty. I'm here to advocate for funding through the arts with Measure U Funding. This funding was heavily campaigned the last two years on the backs of local artists. And I want to make sure that there's going to be accountability with the funding and that it goes to supporting a local artist. With Talent Magazine, we're getting ready to go into our 12th year of publishing. We featured over 300,000 talents across the country. We're in 50 cities across the country. We are among one of the largest digital publications in, in the country, and we're independently funding. In a few weeks, we will lose our location that has been a headquarters for the last 10 years in supporting local talent with mainstream recognition. MagnaMopus provides venue space for free to local artists and business development through technology and outreach to homeless women in our community. One of the challenges I have experienced with Sacramento is local businesses, nonprofits, and city officials do not see the value in supporting local talent with paid opportunities. The reality of our arts community is most artists are working for free and have for many years on making Sacramento a destination for the arts and tourism. The only arts organizations that are financially benefiting are established organizations. With this type of culture, it does not support entrepreneurship in the arts that you would see in markets of LA, San Francisco, Miami, and New York. The talent with the most capabilities to contribute a large tax base to Sacramento are excluded. Just look at the work of Nipsey Hussle was doing for Los Angeles. Local artists are an unstoppable force in revitalizing underserved communities. I'm disappointed to learn that the city manager does not want to approve funding for next year for the arts. This, this reality is as local...
Your comments, your two minutes is complete.
Okay. Well, I am organizing artists, and we will have a film crew this evening to get it out to more people.
Our final speaker tonight is Jeffrey Tardagia.
I have an audience of 35 million...
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Tardagia.
Mr. Tardagia, how are you today?
Well, 8:30 this morning, and before, I was at the state legislature. Of an o'clock or so thereafter is when 392 with Shirley Berry passed out of the legislature to the next office, next session through here. I am here because realizing that as many people as you're expecting tonight, it seems like you want no public comment. That's a disappointment of this, for this council.
You misunderstood, Mr. Tardagia. There will be ample time for the public to comment on the soccer agreement. There just will not be public comment for items not on the agenda. The soccer agreement is, is the issue on the agenda tonight. So people will have a chance to... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I guess my two minutes are up. Mr. Carty.
Thank you again. I want to thank, should we say, city council for enacting dealing with jump bikes. And I've seen the jump bikes getting picked up in last week far more prolifically. And I have many, many pictures of both the junk bike and the scooters in inappropriate places. I attended last night a pod conference dealing with future of transportation. I appreciated what I heard. At the same time, it meant that I missed your darn RT board meeting, even as short as the session was about. So that was where the, fortunately the public comment was in the front of the piece, so I could offer my public comment and see some of the changes that are going on through here. Now, for the... Now, for the city, you guys in Public Works apparently are working on the cement. Your Public Works, though likewise in Steve Hanson's district, makes the problem of they tear out cement without thinking of the consequences. I most noted this, will offer to this, this is on 8th Street, dealing with the, should we say, federal courthouse. You tore it all out so that you couldn't longer get to the bus stop location. You've done these in a number of other places. You guys need to do much more effective communication of what's going on.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete. I have no more speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Curt. Yeah. Now, we have council comments on items, council comments, ideas, AV, 1, 2, 3 reports.
Vice Mayor, can I make a read into the record, the board and commission appointments?
Yes.
First to the active transportation commission, Tamiko Heim, and then to the Sacramento community, please review Commissioner Jay King.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I know under the law, I'm required to make a report about my recent trip to China. I'm, of course, happy to do, and I will make a more extensive report at some point in the future in the right public forum. But to fulfill the obligation and to just give you a little bit of a taste, I was in China last week for eight days with a delegation, Sacramento delegation, of about 25 people, including some of the leaders of the Aggie Square project, representatives from Sac State, from SMUD, from our business community, County Supervisor Patrick Kennedy, and some of our city staff, including Assistant City Manager in Charge of Economic Development, Michael Jasso. And we went on a trade mission. And I'm happy to report to you that this was a very organized and robust several days. We went to three cities, to Beijing, to Chongqing, and to Shenzhen. And in each of the cities, our leader, I guess I was the leader, is the mayor of the city, but the one who really organized the trip, Tony Young, did a great job organizing these, what they called matchmaking sessions. We had auditoriums full of Chinese government officials and Chinese investors who heard about Sacramento. We made presentations about our city and its economic growth, and about Aggie Square, and California Mobility Center, and Sac State Center of Innovation, and the Sacramento Kings were represented as well. Everybody loves the Kings. And we then broke into, I guess you would call it something analogous to speed dating. They call it a matchmaking session, where the investors sat down with members of our delegation and for a couple of hours, shared ideas, potential proposals, ways that we might invest as a business community in China, but ways that Chinese investors might help us investment-wise with some of our signature projects. And so, I'm confident, without knowing exactly, that something tangible is really going to come from these series of matchmaking sessions. And China, of course, is a fascinating country. On the one hand, it is amazing to see their pace of growth and how many people have gone from the countryside to middle-class lives in urban centers. On the other hand, it's no secret, it's quite a price to pay in terms of air quality, in terms of the congestion, and without the ability to argue with their government officials in the way everybody who comes to city council chambers are allowed to. And so, it's a fascinating contrast with our system. And even while our federal government and the Chinese federal government are negotiating a trade deal, we thought it's important, and they reiterated it at the sub-national level, that states and cities continue to meet and continue to try to partner where we can help each other. That's my report. I'm very glad to be home, by the way, 15 hours. Good to be back, and thank you for all you did to keep going while I was gone. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for Madam Clerk, that was AV 1, 2, 3 report, 1, 2, 3, 4 report, and Tony Young, also Sac State alumni. Yep. Doing a great job in China, too. Councilmember Jennings.
Vice Mayor, just want to make sure that this will be our last opportunity for community announcements, or will that opportunity be this evening as well?
Just, no, just now.
It'll be at this point in time, Mr. Jennings.
Okay. So, I'll do that right now. If you cannot make it here to City Hall, we invite you to come to the Valley High Community Center located at 7833 Center Parkway. We're going to bring City Hall right to you in the neighborhood, so we encourage you to stop by with any issues or problems that you have to see if we can resolve them for you. That'll take place on Thursday, the 11th of April at 6:00 p.m. Also, I want you to save the date for the upcoming events. The Shiva's Safety and Family Day will take place Saturday, April 13th, from 11:00 to 4:00. This is going to take place at Valley High Park. You can join us as we celebrate health and safety. There's going to be free tri-tip and chicken lunches for the first 300 attendees, as well as health screenings and information on individual health, pet safety and health, and much, much more. So, once again, that's Saturday, April 13th, from 11:00 to 4:00. And then, the 2019 schedule will kick off for trucks and such in District 7, starting with this Friday, April 19th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Garcia Bend Park. And the bathrooms have been completely redone, so we're going to have a little ribbon cutting or first flush, as you may call it. And then, on Saturday, April 20th, we'll have our Easter extravaganza taking place at 10:00 at Garcia Bend Park and 1:00 at Mesa Grande Park. Free Easter egg hunt, photos with the Easter bunny, and much, much more. So, bring the kids out for a great time on Saturday, April 20th, 10:00 Garcia Bend, 1: 00 Mesa Grande Park.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wanted to just say congratulations to the mayor for a successful trip to China. I've had a chance to go over several times, and I think the opportunity that China and the people there present in terms of either locating businesses here in Sacramento or investors coming over, I think is a wonderful opportunity for us. I appreciate and respect the leadership because I think that your presence over there made a big difference. And so, congratulations to our mayor and the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, a couple of years ago in 2015, I called for a cost of homelessness report, which was produced, and it's been very valuable to the city, and I've called for an update. And I'm happy to say it will be released fairly soon, and this will be, again, very valuable information as we make policy decisions regarding homelessness. Food Truck Mania returns this Friday, April 12th, at 5:00 p.m. at Glen Hall Park, my own neighborhood, 5414 Sandberg Drive. And it'll be every second Friday through September. Friday Night Hot Spot is this Friday, April 12th, from 7:00 to 11:00 at Rio Tierra Junior High School, 3201 Norsted Drive. And lastly, as Councilmember Jennings noted, next Saturday, we can half out, April 20th, is when we're going to start celebrating Easter. And so, the Isak Kawani's Pancake Breakfast and Easter Egg Hunt will happen at the Clooney Clubhouse in McKinley Park, 601 Alhambra Boulevard. Breakfast begins at 7:00 a.m., and the egg hunt starts at 9:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. For District 6 updates, we've got the College Glen Food Trucks, starting on Thursday, April 18th. Come out to Glenbrook Park and join family and friends. Bring your blankets and have a good time out there in the park. Also, the Avondale Glen Elder Neighborhood Association is having their Egg Extravaganza over at the George Simm Community Center. Come join our community off of Lemon Hill and Elder Creek to a fun day Easter egg hunting with the, hunting eggs, I guess? Easter egg, at the Easter egg hunt. Tahoe Park's also having their annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 13th, at 10:00 a.m. And also, if you want to get up a little earlier, we're going to do the Morrison Creek Cleanup as part of Creek Week. Thank you, Councilmember Harris, for your support of Creek Week. And we're going to be helping clean up Morrison Creek off of Lemon Hill and Logan. So, everyone, thanks for all your support out there in the community. Madam Clerk, that's all we have on council comments. With that, we're adjourned.